Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, September 17th work session for the Glen County Board of Commissioners. I've asked Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Clark lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with us, please.
Father God, thank you for the opportunity for us to be, come before you today to do, conduct county business and thank you for loving us and blessing us and being our God. Please keep your, put your hand on us and your head protection around us so that we can make good and solid decisions that will affect the great, greater good and better benefit of our wonderful county. All in your son's name, precious holy name. Amen.
Everyone place a right hand of heart.
For the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda today, our first item is to receive an introduction from Terry Luke. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Chief Executive Officer of the Coastal Area District Development Authority, Inc. And we'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Terry Locke and I'm the CEO of Coastal Area District Development Authority. How many of you are familiar with us?
Only vaguely.
I figured a good amount. So, CADA is a small business lender that helps local businesses gain access to loan programs. We cover all of Georgia, northern Florida, and southern South Carolina, but we have a focus on coastal Georgia. So, from Camden up through Scraven. We're not a bank, though. We're not a depository institution. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit mission-based lender or economic development agency. So, we were created in 1976 to administer a grant from the EDA to a local seafood processing plant. Over the course of the last forty-seven, almost fifty years, we've continued to add products to that loan program. In 1982, we received our CDC designation. Stands for Certified Development Company and it's just a tight, fancy title that allows us to do SBA 504 loans. In addition, in the early nineties, we received funds from the USDA to become an IRP lender, which is Economic Development Loans geared towards rural regions as outlined by the USDA. And then again, in 2016, we became a Community Advantage Pilot Program, or a small SBA 7A lender. And then most recently, in 2020, we became the recipient of a $9.5 million CARES Act Award to create a revolving loan fund in the coastal Georgia to help small businesses survive and get through COVID. Now, what all these products do is they don't replace bank funding or private funding they partner with. So typically, what we do is we partner with a bank to fund a project in a 50-40-10 manner. What I mean by that is the bank finances 50%. We come in, in a subordinate position, we finance 40%, and then we look for a 10% equity injection from the borrower. The benefit to the bank, obviously, is they get a partner in the loan, so it mitigates their risk. To the borrower, they get typically a fixed rate loan, a longer term, we can term our loans out, out to twenty-five years. They get a reduced equity injection. So, a traditional lender or a bank wants to see no less than 20-25% in the deal. So, with us being able to lower that equity injection, it helps the business keep cash on their balance sheet for working capital, which is oftentimes extremely hard for small businesses to finance. Our loan programs cover anywhere between $20,000 and $5.5 million. So, we cover a vast array of needs for small businesses. When you're looking at that traditional 50-40-10 split, and we're at that five-and-a-half million participation, that's about a $13.2 million project overall. So, oftentimes, folks here of CADA, they hear of the SBA, they think small business, but for what we truly typically think about as small business, it's a little bit more robust than what you would think of. We can do, while we help mom and pop shops, we can be more aggressive and fund larger programs as well. And when you get into those larger programs, that reduction in equity can mean a dramatic difference between what you have to inject and what you can keep on your balance sheet. We focus with these programs on owner-occupied real estate, construction or renovation projects, equipment. We can do limited refinance in certain situations, as long as there's a benefit to the borrower, and we can look at working capital requests. The key is, we're not here to do what we would think of as bad deals, but we're here to do deals that need a risk mitigator. We're here to help small businesses, for whatever reason, whether it's industry, whether it's equity, maybe it's tight cash flow, that are just right on the verge of being able to get a bank loan and can't. We're here to step in and help mitigate and fill that gap to allow the small business to be able to grow. Since 1976, we've helped numerous businesses. We've created over 2,000 jobs, and with our programs, we've lent well over $70 million over the course of that almost fifty years. Currently, we have 161 loans outstanding for just under $36 million in the community. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
How many of y'all have in Glen County?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How many loans do y'all have in Glen County?
That's a good question. Off the top of my head, I don't know. I can get you that information. We've got it broken down. I just didn't bring it with me today. I know our most recent, one of our most recent 504s was in Glen and right down the street, and it was a partnership with United Community and the Downtown Development Authority. It was a purchase of an empty or abandoned building, and it was renovated, and it's now an operational facility.
What's the similarities and differences between what you do and an SBA loan?
So, it depends. I mean, some of our programs are SBAs, loans. The traditional SBA product that everyone thinks about, I think, is the 7A. So, with a 7A loan, the lender's getting an insurance policy from the SBA. We offer that through our Community Advantage Program. It's called a Small 7A. But our 504 program, our SBA 504, that is actually funded through a debenture or a bond that's pooled monthly, and when loans are ready to fund, the SBA takes, there's 220 CDCs all over the nation. So, every month, when these CDCs are ready to close loans, they pull these loans from across the country and they actually sell them on Wall Street in the form of a debenture, and then that money trickle, trickles back down across the country to the small businesses. So, it's the difference between a guarantee and actual dollars lent.
Is banks dispersed to y'all? Say you got a 50-40-10. So, the, all the loan mechanism is set up through the, through the bank, and the customer makes payments to the bank, and then banks dispersed to, back to y'all?
So, there's multiple ways. That's one way. The other way is you would have two loans, a first mortgage and a second mortgage, and then you would make your payment to the bank and you would make your payment to us. That is becoming what we do most often, and the reason is, the banks like to have that sole first position and be in a limited loan to value. So, if we have our own loan and it's in second, and we service it, then they get a better collateral position.
Terry, I'm sorry.
Are you the first or the second?
Second, yeah.
If I remember right, on the 504, the first mortgage is a long-term fixed rate based off the debenture, and the second, the floating rate, right? You have a, so the overall, you have a blended rate?
So, so it depends. The SBA component, the debenture, will be fixed for up to twenty-five years. That'll be in second. The bank, they can set their interest as they see fit. A lot of times, we'll see it fixed, but what you typically see is on that bank portion, that first component is an adjustable rate that pretty much resets every five years.
And does your term coincide with the bank terms, or is it a shorter term component?
Typically, it's no shorter than the bank, if not longer. So, on a 504, the requirements would be the bank gives the client at least a ten-year term on real estate, and that's where we could extend out to twenty-five years. So, it helps with your, your monthly cash flow and debt service.
This might be a stupid question, but you said you're a nonprofit. So, do y'all not charge an interest rate?
So, we do. The key for us as a nonprofit is we have a mission of economic development and business lending before profiting. So, our goal is to not profit, but fulfill our mission of economic development.
So, y'all rates are the same as the bank or whatever, whatever the current?
So, we price competitively. Sometimes with the 504 right now, we're below the standard bank rate. So, the 504 is at about 5.8% fixed for twenty-five years, where the banks are setting somewhere around eight percent. Our internal programs, we can price based off risk and review, but most of the time, we're competitive. If we're going to be in a second position, sometimes we'll be a little bit higher than the bank. The key is, we're not a predatory rate. So, oftentimes, what you'll see is with some of these more aggressive lending entities that will do non-prime loans, is they're going to set your rate at seventeen, eighteen, nineteen percent. We're going to keep you somewhere around prime. We're competitive for someone or some business that couldn't get a traditional loan.
How, how many minority loans have you all?
I don't, I don't have those statistics with me. So, with the Community Advantage, that's one of our, and with the SBA, it's one of the public policy goals, minority lending. In addition to that, with our revolving loan fund policies, again, we focus on minority and BIPOC lending, but I didn't bring those numbers with me today.
Do you all have, I heard you say you start at twenty-five. Do you do any micro lending?
Not what you would consider typical micro lending as a micro SBA program, but again, we can go down to $20,000. The issue becomes, or the challenge we have when we get that low is our requirements. Oftentimes, it doesn't justify the things that the borrower has to do for a $20,000 loan in a lot of instances. So, it's on a case-by-case scenario, much smaller than that. It can be an arduous process for them.
When, when you talk about risk and review, setting a rate, what does that mean?
So, we take into account repayment history. We take into account debt-to-income ratios. We take into account cash flow. We take into account credit scores. The difference between a mission-based lender and a bank lender is we look at more than just the score. We look at the story behind the score. Where a lot of times in today's market, banks, the way they're regulated, they have a minimum score. If you're below that score, they can't move forward. We don't necessarily have a minimum score. What we want to do is figure out what's driving your score. So, that's, that's the biggest difference.
Do banks get any CRA credits by working with you all or some of your clients?
They can, depending on where the, where the loans are, or some of the other things that go into that. But yeah, CRA credits can be received through the bank or by the bank.
Terry, are most of the applicants, are they contacting you directly, or is it coming, is the contact coming from the bank to you?
It's a combination. So, really, we have three different marketing strategies or targets. One is our banking partners, because often, they see the loans more often. Two is our economic development partners, so chambers, development authorities, commissioners, boards of commissioners. And then lastly, is directly to, to the borrower. A lot of times, what you'll see, especially in areas that are overbanked, it helps if the borrower comes directly to us for a couple of different reasons. Number one, we have a good idea of bank appetite and what they will and will not lend for. So, if you're coming to us and you want to do a restaurant, and we know Bank ABC is tough to do a restaurant deal, but Bank XYZ likes them, then we can funnel you to that bank and make the process a little bit more efficient for you. We always recommend, if you come directly to us, though, that we start with the bank that you have a relationship with.
Anything else, Commissioners? Well, Mr. Locke, we appreciate very much you coming in. This is very informative and appreciate you introducing yourself to us and, and what you do.
Thank you, gentlemen. If it's okay with you, I'm going to leave cards and a couple slide presentations on the table.
Absolutely. If, if you would hand them, Ms. over here, please.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chairman, if I could, just an administrative note, just monitoring online. Commissioners, if you could, pull the microphones a little bit closer when asking questions and making comments, just so people online, they can hear the presentation, but they can't hear all the questions that are coming up.
All right. Thank you. Next, number two on our agenda today is receiving a presentation from Taylor Ritz with the Glen Brunswick Land Bank Authority. I had a conversation with Ms. Ritz a couple of months ago now, a month and a half ago, maybe, and she asked if she could come forward and speak to us, and I certainly welcome her. So, welcome, welcome to our meeting today, and, and the floor is yours.
Do I, I'm assuming this is for the PowerPoint?
Okay. And you'll need to be a little closer to your mic as well.
Okay. First of all, thank you for squeezing me in to present to you guys about the Glen Brunswick Land Bank Authority. I will try to stay within my time. I practice this a couple of times, and it's, it's close, because I get really excited and probably give way too much information than what you need. But just as an introduction for myself, and also because I never miss a chance to show pictures of my kids, like I said, I'm Taylor Ritz. I'm the Administrative Director for the Glen Brunswick Land Bank. I'm a Glen Academy and UGA graduate. Came home, married my high school sweetheart, and gained two wonderful children, and then four months ago, had my first baby, who is currently waiting on a heart transplant at the University of Florida. I've been a Glen Academy Girl Soccer Coach for seven years. I've worked in real estate for the last five years and in the local government for the last two, now as the Administrative Director. So, the Glen Brunswick Land Bank Authority, if you're not familiar, is, was created with an intergovernmental agreement between the city and county governments in 2017. Now, since then, they hadn't had any employees. So, I am their first hired employee. I started in December of 2023. And it's run by a board of seven. So, there's two county commissioners, two city commissioners, a Board of Education representative, and then a city and county representative, just a citizen representative. What I want to talk to you about today is the purpose of the land bank, kind of how it works, some of the benefits, and some of the projects that we currently have. But instead of giving you all the information, today, I'm looking at, to show you the lens from the county-held tax deeds and what the land bank can do with those. So, the purpose of the land bank, the main purpose, is to bring non-revenue generating property back onto the tax roll. Now, that can be done with tax sales. You know, the tax commissioner can take delinquent property to tax sale to try and bring them back onto the tax roll. What the land bank focuses on is vacant, abandoned, dilapidated properties, especially properties with clouded titles that often have issues being brought to a tax sale. So, some of the goals of the land bank are to acquire those delinquent properties, develop affordable housing, urban redevelopment, reducing light, responsible investment, and like I said, avoiding some of those title issues. So, how it works, land bank is a bit of a misnomer. It, you know, makes it sound like we have this big bank full of land, because it says land bank. But in reality, the land bank doesn't usually try to, ideally wouldn't try to acquire property unless there's already a transferee in mind for that property to get it back on the tax roll and redeveloped or developed. There's a variety of ways the land bank can acquire property, but we can research delinquent property that we think would be a good candidate for the land bank. We can have an interested party bring property to us that they have found. But either way, once someone brings a property to us, they would submit an application. We would review that application, and in that process, contact any entities that might have had issues with that property. We can talk to city or county code enforcement, if it's a, a problem property for them, a nuisance. We can talk to law enforcement, if they have lots of issues with that property, if it's creating problems in a neighborhood to get it cleaned up. And through that process, we do a title search, and once all of that is done, it goes before the board for approval. If the application is approved, we would extinguish the back taxes, provide quiet title, and then sell the property to the transferee per the disposition schedule and the costs that the land bank incurred for that property. So, these are the transfer costs. So, we have an administrative fee, which is based on, as you can see, the type of the property and the transferee. So, we have the administrative fee, the costs incurred by the land bank, whether that's legal fees, maintenance costs, if we had to secure it for safety purposes. And as you can see, there is a discount for city and county employees, for nonprofits, for the government. So, if the county needed a piece of property for something, if the school board needed a piece of property, they would have a, a discount in that transfer fee. And like I said, the city and county employees as well. So, as an example, this is one property that the county holds a tax deed to. It's 120 Saxon Street in District Four. The property taxes are delinquent back to at least 2017, and there's a tax deed from 2009 to 2013. So, those years were delinquent as well. The owner is deceased, and it has an assessed value of $100,000. And so, if a county employee submitted an application to the land bank that they wanted to renovate this property, bring it back into productive use, the land bank would transfer for approximately $45,000. So, that would be the administrative fee for an employee with a lot with a structure for rehab is a 40% of the assessed value, according to the tax commissioner, would be that $40,000. The legal cost, approximately $4,500, depends, you know, on how difficult it is to acquire that, that title, and then maintenance of cleaning up the property in the... And then maintenance of cleaning up the property in the transfer time, you know, to make it look nice for the neighborhood. So that would be forty-five thousand. So some of the benefits, really the, the primary benefit, um, the benefits all come down to the land bank enables us to take these tax deeds um, and have control over what they are used for. So if you take the tax deeds to a sale, it's a public auction to the highest bidder. Um, whereas through the land bank, you can determine the best use, whether, like I said, a government entity needs it, does a nonprofit need it? Um, and then we can vet and designate developers or any other transferee to make sure that they have a successful development record, that they're in good standing with the city or county. We can use them for county and city purchase programs for recruitment and retainment. Uh, we can set a timeline for the completion of those projects so that we know um, within a certain amount of time, those properties will be back on the tax roll with a higher assessed value than they previously had because they've been cleaned up. We are cleaning up abandoned dilapidated structures that can cause injury, can attract crime and vagrancy. Um, and when we clean up those properties, we increase the value of the properties around them as well. Um, and then also we can include deed restrictions, reversionary clauses if any of these requirements are not met, um, things like that. So this is just a little overview of the difference between selling those deeds at tax sales versus a land bank transfer. So for a tax sale, you can potentially bring the properties back onto the tax roll. It does pay the um, delinquent taxes, but unfortunately, in my previous position as the tax specialist for the City of Brunswick, what I would see a lot is that properties would be sold at a tax sale and then never foreclosed on. And unfortunately, often the taxes of the subsequent years would not be paid. And so they would end up back on a tax sale again in a few years, um, which would further cloud those titles, unfortunately. Um, and so what the tax sales do, you know, the unclaim excess funds are remitted to the state. You have to convey the property as is, so there's no quiet title, which means sometimes that title is not insurable. Um, and they're purchased, you know, by the highest bidder. Now with a land bank transfer, we guarantee those properties are brought back onto the tax roll, um, extinguish those back taxes. Any funds from the transfers are reinvested back into the land bank to clean up additional property. It produces clear insurable title and we have that application process um, so that we can make sure that the projects are suitable to the area. We can ensure that those projects are completed in a timely manner. So here are some of our projects that we have currently. Um, the first one is seventeen hundred Niles Avenue. So this project started out, it was a one lot with two uninhabitable structures on it. It had an assessed value of fifty-five thousand seven hundred when the land bank transferred it to a developer. Um, it is now three separate lots. There are two new homes and there's a third one being built. So those three values are the assessed values of those three lots now, um, today. So like I said, that third lot doesn't have a pro- a home on it yet. Um, but as of right now, without that third home being built, that land has an eight hundred percent increase in tax revenue since the land bank transferred it. Uh, another one of our properties, thirteen fifteen Union, it was uh, essentially a, a, a teardown, uh, but it is a historic property. And so an individual did come forward who wanted to renovate it. It's a barber house. If you guys know what that is, it's a architect. Um, but he has three years to rehab the property. The current assessed value is almost forty thousand. The estimated projection is uh, an assessed value of over four hundred thousand compared to similar sized properties, um, or homes on the same street. Seventeen oh one Wolf Street is a partnership with the City of Brunswick with their new housing program. Um, they have a target area in Newtown where they want to uh, renovate. And so this property is in that location. And once we complete the transfer, the city will have eighteen months to rehab. This was a county held tax deed that the, that you all approved um, to the land bank. And so the current assessed value is eight six hundred, estimated projection is fifty thousand. There are four other um, properties that the city would like to also renovate at the same time as this one. Two of them do have county tax deeds, two of them do not. Um, so for those other two, what we would do is take them through what's called a judicial and ren foreclosure. Um, but that will require the cooperation of the County Tax Commissioner and the City Tax Office to take those to that foreclosure. And then another one of our projects is um, ten twenty-three and ten twenty-five Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. It's right around the corner from Glen Academy. You can see the Glen Academy tennis courts right there. Um, these each have their adjacent vacant lots. They each have an assessed value of fifty-five hundred. And based on new construction in the same area for a similar sized home, projected values over a hundred thousand each, once they're, they're completed. I know it's kind of hard to see, but that's the, the rendering that we have. Um, and that is with the Brunswick Housing Authority. Alright, so I know very few people come before you without wanting something. I'm one of those people. So some of the considerations that the land bank puts before you, um, we do plan to and will be self-sufficient in the coming years. As we are getting started, I know it seems like, you know, you hear that it was created in twenty seventeen. It sounds like this should be a well-running, you know, established um, entity. But unfortunately, when you have a board of seven people on, on a volunteer basis, you're not going to get as much done as when you have an employee. Now they have an employee. It's me. I'm pretty great, if I say so myself. But as of now, uh, the consideration would be for the county to um, approve the requested funding for the land bank. Um, continued cooperation of transferring those county tax deeds to the land bank so that we can get them cleaned up and transferred and productive and back on the tax roll. Um, and this is more of a tax commissioner item, but access to the county tax system to be able to run reports and research delinquent properties. I do have access to the cities, um, but I don't have access to the counties. And that's it. So again, I want to thank you guys for letting me uh, present to you today. Hopefully I didn't go over time too much. Um, does anyone have any questions? I know that was a lot.
You've actually got a minute left.
Oh, good. I must have been nervous. I was probably talking fast.
I know you, you may have the numbers. In twenty twenty-three, how many houses did y'all work on, you know, ballpark? I know you've just come on, but.
Yeah.
How many were y'all started, I guess? And uh, it takes a while to complete them obviously, but how many did you get started? Do you know in twenty twenty-three?
One. It was that thirteen fifteen Union. Mm-hmm. But the rest of those um, have been since I started. And also, I was also on maternity leave for three months. So. Any other questions?
I'm sure. Um, so if, if the county deeds over a tax deed to you, uh, you're asking basically you have one that, or two that you said uh, you would like to work with now, uh, in your presentation?
Yes. I haven't sent that request to y'all yet, though.
Okay. Alright, and we would deed those or, or pass that deed on to you uh, at, at no expense to the land bank. When the land bank moves that on to its prospect, end user, whomever, uh, the monies that you receive from that would go to further your operation and, and expenses of running the land bank. Is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions? Anything? Alright. We appreciate you coming in today.
Alright.
And, and thank you for being considerate of the time.
I did, I did my best.
Alright.
Chairman, I, I see our tax commissioner sitting in the back of the room. I don't know if you have anything you may want to add to in reference to delinquent tax properties from the county standpoint. I know you deal with that.
Uh, well.
And if, and if you would come to the mic so people online can hear.
Of course, this is a policy, po- policy decision. Uh, we, we discovered a little over, what was it, three hundred county-owned properties and we've worked diligently to get those processed. First wave was a huge success. Um, generated a little over six hundred thousand more than anticipated. Uh, this last phase will be October first and uh, there was a comment made that, you know, about people buying the deed and then it going back. Uh, we haven't had that problem because we'll put it right back on sale in twelve months and somebody else will buy it. And so we, we keep that tax collected. We're, as of September, the first Tuesday in September, we're a hundred percent of collection in the city, particularly let's say the city uh, limits for county taxes. So we're, we're like stepping on it. Um, it, there is an unfortunate thing with the city collecting their own taxes. The delinquent taxpayers are essentially paying a double fee because they have the administrative fee for the city collection process for delinquent and then they're trying to have the county too. So it's, it's really harming the people that are delinquent in taxes. But uh, we're happy to acquiesce to whatever demand you have, but um, uh, this, this uh, there's a lot of people excited. We've done a good job advertising and uh, we're selling one hundred percent of our properties and getting the cash within twenty-four hours. And they are um, cleaning up these county-owned properties particularly. It's going to be very beneficial to Glen County. So uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have after this meeting specifically. I just saw this presentation. I didn't think to go online and look for it. But if you have any particular questions about it, we happy to, you know, happy to provide you with information so you can get a good, clean answer on what you're trying to do and move forward.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number three this afternoon is a discussion on possible recreation and park fee increases. And uh, we have with us our director, Lisa Gorganis. Welcome this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yeah, Lisa Gorganis, Recreation and Parks Director. Um, appreciate y'all um, having me here today to talk about some potential uh, fee increases that we uh, might want to consider. Um, starting with uh, in January of twenty twenty-five is what we would propose. So I've got a, um, a few slides. I'll try not to uh, take this too long. Um, I've given each of you a handout today and it's also a handout that's attached to the agenda report. So if there are people um, listening online that want to access it, it's a, it's a six-page handout and it's a list of all of our fees that have been previously approved by the board of, by sitting board of commissioners. And it's got some of the items in yellow highlights that are proposed um, to bring forward for your consideration to uh, to increase in the future. Uh, we annually evaluate our fees for all of our programs, facilities and services. Um, it includes just a review mainly of costs directly associated with the program, the facility or the service. We also, you know, kind of look at what our competitors, which we don't have many in Glen County, but I mean, our, our District Two agencies in, in our areas, what they're charging for different things. And uh, and try to make sure that what we're doing is uh, is fair, um, fair market value and it takes into consideration, um, you know, what, what local families are, are dealing with in their, in their own households. Um, so attachment aids, that handout, uh, the recommended increases, like I said, are in the yellow highlights. And none of the fees that are recommended to be increased have increased in over ten years. Some of the fees have not increased even longer than that, but that's as far back as I can go for those. I know uh, the last increase in youth athletic fees was a twenty percent increase and it was at least before two thousand and fourteen. So, so um, what we've done is I've got a slide that shows just the athletic fee changes. We're not talking about changing fees, um, for the most part for um, the little kids. We want them to stay affordable. Uh, the, the fees that we're looking at for the athletics, they range anywhere from eleven percent of an increase to a less than fifteen percent increase. Um, we just, we feel like with some of the costs that we're starting to see and have seen in the last couple of years for the uh, equipment and the supplies and the uniforms, which I do have slides with that. Um, you know, as an example, um, baseballs, they from, and to, for, they've gone up fifteen dollars in the last five years. Um, helmets are very expensive where they, they used to not be as expensive. Bats have gone up extremely high, uh, catcher's gear. So baseball and softball expenses, you know, have really gone up. So what we're looking at are some of the fee increases to help cover some of these added costs that are just, that have been coming out of our budget. Um, when you, when you move on to the other sports like basketball and soccer, you know, jersey costs are, are not significantly higher, but you can see the basketball costs um, are higher for the men's balls and the junior balls. Women's balls have gone down, but you know, overall, you know, we are seeing um, an increase in our officials' fees, our scorekeepers' fees, um, our, our jersey costs, the printing costs for that and the equipment costs are, are going up. Um, football is probably the one that has seen the most um, increases in the last five years. You know, the, the cost of, of jerseys has, has been reasonable because we've been able to find vendors that are giving us still good, good quality product at a good, at a good price. Um, but you can see the cost of a football helmet, which we obviously don't buy football helmets every year, but we do have an obligation to um, to provide safe helmets that are um, that are, the pads are refurbished each year. The helmets are refurbished, but, and we try to keep a good qua- uh, quantity in stock, but every year we are faced with having to purchase football helmets. Shoulder pads, when, you know, when equipment comes back and it's been, it's used or damaged, we have to, to, to maintain the safety and integrity of the program, we have to make sure we provide our kids with safe equipment. Football pants have gone up, um, flag football sets, footballs in general. Um, just a lot of, um, lot of costs. Again, officials and scorekeepers. Uh, one of the things that we started doing a couple of years, about two or three years ago is we um, try to get an extra duty officer or two to be at some of our sports games because things have gotten sometimes out of hand and when we have those extra duty officers there, things don't get as out of hand. It's funny what a badge and a gun will do when people see that. They behave better. So, so that's an expense that we've incurred and we've included it in our budget. Um, however, it's just an added cost to provide these programs. So that's pretty much a, a pretty, a good summary of our youth athletic programs that we would like to um, we would like to increase and would like for you guys to provide some input on that and, and let us know what your thoughts are on that. Uh, moving on to some of our facility rental fee changes that we would propose. Uh, this is kind of the, the same thing. You know, we're looking at, at some marginal increases, nominal increases for some of our park, or, or the parks that we rent out for events and festivals. So these would be for non-county events that are happening in our parks. Um, and while they do, you know, we're excited to have those in our parks, they do it cause us to have some costs associated with that. You know, we provide an onsite attendant at a lot of these uh, places when they rent a room at the casino or a wedding at the atrium, we have an attendant. We have supplies, janitorial supplies. Um, we have to maintain the park areas, the cost of maintaining um, the mowing services and things like that. All these things have, have really just gone up in the last couple of years. And so we're just trying to, you know, make our prices a little more where we can, you know, get some of those costs recoup through the revenues that we would generate from those rentals. Um, we're looking to potentially add a couple of fees. Veterans Memorial Park currently is not a rentable facility, but we have gotten some requests in the last uh, year or so for people that are at non-veterans events to be held at that park. And so proposing the, the idea of implementing a per day cost to rent Veterans Memorial Park. A park cleaning fee, that would be a non-refundable fee, that would help cover the cost of things like um, an extra janitorial service, um, as an example. When Postale Park has a big arts festival, we contact Sean Robinson and, and Danny and their team and we ask the cleaning contracted, uh, the contracted cleaning service to be a, uh, mindful of that and to provide an extra cleaning during those events because they bring such a volume of people to the parks and those facilities. We want to make sure that they're sa- they're clean, well-stocked with paper and that sort of thing. Um, the Southern, Selden Park Headmaster's House lawn, uh, the park board, as you know, has been trying to open that as a museum. Um, there's a pretty lawn area in front of that uh, headmaster's house. We're proposing to add a fee that would allow people to rent that area to have an event, whether it's a family picnic or um, music on the porch or whatever, some gathering that, that, that people would like to have in that area because it's become a really nice area of Selden Park. Our community buildings, we, um, if you recall during the county's reorganization about a, a year, a little over a year ago, Recreation and Parks um, took over again, the management and, and rentals of those community buildings. We have three in our parks. Ballard will hold a hundred people, Baldwin will hold about sixty people and Highland will hold about thirty people. Uh, that is probably the most significant jump that you would see in any of these fees, uh, as we're proposing to go from seventy-five dollars per day to two hundred dollars per day. And to address that, um, it does seem like a, a big increase. Um, our facilities, uh, Danny's group this, in this budget year does have money in the budget at our request to replace the floors in the Baldwin and Ballard community buildings. So it's about a twenty thousand dollar uh, request to, to, to uh, improve the floors and upgrades to those buildings. Um, the buildings are rented quite a bit. They're, it's seventy-five dollars. That covers a twelve-hour period. And when you break that down, that, people are renting an indoor facility with air conditioning, um, restrooms and kitchen for six dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, when you break it down per hour. Not everybody rents for twelve hours, but a lot of them do. They want to come in. Not everybody rents for twelve hours, but a lot of them do. They want to come in and set up. They have their event and they clean up. By comparison, um, Casino Room One-O-A currently rents for sixty dollars an hour. The Ballard Meeting Room currently rents for, um, a little less than about sixteen dollars an hour, and an Activity Room at Selden Park rents for ten dollars an hour. So what we're proposing with the community building isn't to increase it at two, two hundred dollars per day, which would come out to about sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents an hour. A community building requires a lot of extra work from our maintenance staff that have to prep the building for the rental. Then they have to go in after it, inspect it, and then they clean the building after the rental. And in recent weeks, those cleanings have been rougher than usual. Um, there's a hundred-dollar deposit that is refundable, and sometimes we do keep those deposits when people don't clean up after themselves. But most people don't mind forfeiting that hundred dollars just to leave a building in, in complete disarray. So we are proposing a, a high, what you would say, a higher increase for that, uh, those facilities than we would for some of the other, um, park areas we're looking at. The Black Island Overnight Docking Fee, we implemented this a couple of years ago. We really, over the course of a year, probably don't have more than fifty to sixty boats that dock there because it's not, it, it, it's a, there's not that many slips for people to dock. Um, so we, it's a nominal thing, but we, we thought maybe we should raise that fee to match what the St. Simon's Marina is doing, which is, uh, my understanding is they're ten dollars per night. So that's that one. And then talking with the Black Island Park Advisory Board and our, and our park manager and our staff last week, one of the things that we get a lot of questions about at Black Island Regional Park are military discounts. And I know that this is not a fee increase, but it's a fee change. We would propose implementing a ten percent discount on campsites only for, for military, you know, active or retired. And, um, because we, you know, we, we appreciate the, the service to, to our country, and we just thought that might be a nice thing to add. We do actually already offer military discounts for Neptune Park Pool and Selden Park Pool for passes, individuals and families. So we thought this would be another, um, nice thing to do, to, uh, to, out of respect and honor for our militaries, to offer that at our Black Island campsites. Um, with regards to the athletics programs, we do still have the Athletics For All Scholarship Program that the Board of Commissioners implemented about two years ago. The funds for that program are, uh, coming from the Mainland Athletics Concessions Revenue that is generated from all the sales of the concessions, hot dogs and chips that you see at North Glen. Those monies are put into, um, a segregated account that is then, we use to then pay back, uh, uh, the revenues that we, um, lose when we give a scholarship. So with our scholarship program, you know, families that meet certain criteria, they're eligible to apply for a scholarship. Um, they get twenty dollars, they have to pay twenty dollars to participate in any recreation athletic program, and then the balance of that fee is covered by the scholarship money. So although we are looking at going up on some of our athletic fees, you know, we do have a mechanism in place for families that might have a, a financial need to do so. We still offer additional child discounts for families. Um, so it's a ten percent discount for second, third, and fourth children. So we, we still feel like, even though the fees might, you know, go up, if, if that's what the, the Board of Commissioners ultimately decide, um, we feel like we've got ways to help families that might have some, some, not have some struggles with that. So that, that's pretty much, um, my presentation. I, I've got some fees that are, that are just listed that, so you can see some increases in expenses associated with our parks and rentals. You can see how much an annual salary for custodial services, our janitorial supplies budget has, has increased, um, that's about twenty-five percent. And, and most of the fees that we're looking at associated with parks and rentals is about twenty-five percent. Uh, some are a little higher, some are a little lower, but, um, you know, again, our, our budget, our purpose, I feel like as a Recreation and Parks Department is service. We're here to serve the community and provide recreation and open spaces and, and things for the community. But, um, you know, when you're talking about the people that actually come out and participate and are participating in a program that there's some costs involved that the, that the county has to incur, it, it, it just stands to reason that those involved would, would pace a little bit more to, towards, uh, covering the cost of those services. Um, so. Uh, anyway, that, that's pretty much my presentation. I'm open to any questions or comments you have, and if, if you guys, um, like what you see today, what we will do is we will advertise the public hearing, uh, probably September twenty-sixth in the local paper, and then we would actually conduct a public hearing on October third at a board meeting. We could run through some of this stuff. We could maybe trim it down a little bit, but we would have a public hearing to obtain citizen comment and then more, uh, comments from the Board of Commissioners. And then, uh, the board could take whatever action they choose af- at that meeting. So that would be the, the next steps, I believe.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gorganis. Um, Commissioners, questions?
Hey, Lisa, thank you for your, uh, presentation. One quick question, and you may or may not. From, uh, year twenty-two to twenty-three, did you see a reduction in participation for these ones that are highlighted? The, uh, baseball, you remember?
I don't know, our numbers have, the, the COVID years kind of hit us a little bit, but since then, we've been, our participation has been going up. And it, and this fall, I believe, are the highest overall numbers in our youth participation that we've seen since I've been here. I think it's, we, we topped out over sixteen hundred kids just this fall.
As it is. And the only other thing, and I, I was kind of surprised to, uh, Baldwin Park, I know, um, the tri-area has a meeting out there once every, every three months, and, um, they only use it for an hour. Now they set up for three or four hours. Would they be charged from seventy-five to two hundred or?
I don't think that is, I don't believe that group pays to use the facility.
They do not.
I don't believe they do, no, sir.
All right, I should check it. And also, I believe you mentioned there's going to be some improvements to Baldwin Park. Does the, the audio in there with Prowse? You've been there before.
Yes, sir.
It's terrible. So I'm glad to hear that's coming.
Well, we're going to do some new floor improvements, and, um, I have talked to Danny and his team about some additional things to address the acoustics in that, in those facilities. Yes, sir.
My only questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else?
Lisa, I just, I had one. I, it wasn't a typo, but the price on footballs went up almost ten, ten times. Is that true?
We get better, we get better footballs.
Do we need them? Might be so.
We do. We, we don't buy as many as we used to. We still have some of the smaller ones, but the real game ball, we try to use better game balls, so.
Any autograph?
The other be for.
You can sign them.
Get Mr. Sweat to sign them.
Still J D five?
I think that's what they're using. But yeah, it's different than leather ball versus rubber.
All right. We appreciate your presentation today.
Well, if, if okay with you, then I'll plan for the schedule of advertising and conducting the public hearing.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number four this afternoon is to receive a presentation regarding speed mitigation strategies. Uh, that's a fancy term there, uh, Mr. Public Works Director.
It is.
Uh, but welcome this afternoon and, uh, introduce yourself, please, Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for having me. Danny Smith, Public Works Director. So I was asked to give a presentation on speed mitigation options. Um, as you know, we all hear, you, me, administration about speeding on some of our streets. So we wanted to talk about some different options that we have to mitigate some of that speeding and then talk, and some of that discussion will be about the, the current speed hump policy that we have for the county. Um, so what is the best approach to slowing traffic speeds? And, and I'm not a genius. I didn't come up with a lot of this information. I borrowed it from the internet. But a combination of enforcement, engineering, and public outreach has been shown to slow people down. We're going to focus on the engineering portion of it today, what steps we can take to, to accomplish the goal of slowing people down. And there, and there's a couple of caveats we'll throw in, um, some of the information we received. So I did want to provide a little education. Anything we do with street markings, signs, or anything we put along the roadway has to follow the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Um, this is, uh, the program that was, is put forth by the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, to ensure that a sign or a pavement marking that you see in Georgia is the same one that you're going to see in Wyoming. So that as a driver anywhere in the United States, you are familiar with what that pavement marking or that sign means, need, means. It keeps, uh, keeps confusion down. So it's a standardize, a standardization of what we have, and, um, we want to make sure that, that we stick with that. Um, so MUTC is a national standard, and it is part of the Georgia code that we adhere to that. So what are speed mitigation options? Um, speed humps. Speed humps that we currently employ are a speed mitigation option. Um, the speed feedback devices, like the sign that is probably on your right, my left, that is another device to get drivers to slow down, and there are some other options we're going to discuss. So speed management, more than just speed humps. Speed humps are a, a favorite and an easy, and they are very effective in the right location. Speed feedback signs. Um, some of these others are a little bit bigger than I think we're wanting to get into today, but they are options. So, um, enhanced curve delineation, and we are, have an example of some enhanced curve delineation that we have just employed. Roundabouts are shown to slow people down. I don't know how, because I usually speed up when I go through it, pretending I'm a race car driver. Road diets. Road diet is basically taking a road and making it less attractive to want to speed on and to employ visual effects like taking a four-lane road, going to two lanes with a center turn lane that just make it feel like you need to be driving slower. Um, what, what makes, what, what dictates what you put where? So roadway setting. So an urban road versus a rural road may call for a different county measure, countermeasure. Uh, roadway type. We're not going to put speed humps on an interstate. You're not going to put speed humps on U.S. seventeen. That's not the right device for that location. Speeding-related crash history. Is there really a problem there that we need to be worrying about? And the types of users. So, you know, if you have a, a roadway with a lot of bicycle traffic, kids going to school, you may want to employ different devices and a different approach. And then, of course, um, one of my favorites, cost, and that's, uh, one thing that we all have to be concerned with is when employing a speed control device or program is what is the cost of that. The other issue, and, and the, and I wanted to talk about this because it is in our speed hump policy right now, is the eighty-fifth percentile. So the eighty-fifth percentile is the speed at or below which eighty-five percent of all vehicles observed to travel under free-flowing conditions past a monitoring point. That is essentially if you put a hundred cars out on the road and don't slow them down in any way, you know, what are they going to travel at based on what they feel comfortable on that roadway? So what is kind of the natural speed of that road? That is the eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile. And that's, that eighty-fifth percentile is, um, let me go back. It's what traffic and transportation engineers use as a guide for setting the speed limit at a safe speed to minimize crashes and promote uniform traffic flow along a corridor. So, um, the eighty-fifth percentile is what is used for setting a speed limit. If you take emotion out of it, if you take, well, we think this should be a, a twenty-five mile an hour roadway, then you use the eighty-fifth percentile. So it's, it is the standard with no emotion in it, essentially. Hump versus bump. This is a, always a interesting one, but, um, speed hump is a gradual raised area on a low-speed roadway, residential or local street. Speed hump is what we put in on Broadway recently. Speed bump is what we have been using. Smaller, shorter, generally, it's, uh, used in a parking lot or a private driveway. I am a proponent of the humps more than the bumps. So Glen County does have a speed hump policy. Um, and this is the, the first step in dictating where we put speed humps, and it is called a speed hump policy, not a speed bump policy. Um, the objective is to provide a process where property owners in subdivisions or neighborhood areas may request the installation of speed humps. Has to be a road that is longer than one thousand foot, and it can't have a speed limit of over twenty-five miles per hour. Any property owner may request that Glen County consider the installation of a speed hump on a resident, in subdivision or neighborhood area where his or her land is located. Um, that request is supposed to come to the county commissioner, the district commissioner in writing. And then if that county commissioner desires, that request is forwarded to Public Works for us to review. Um, our review consists of the employment of this device. I brought this to show you, this is how we collect the speed data. So this, this box contains a sensor. It is able to sense a vehicle passing and able to sense what that, the speed of that vehicle is when it's passing. This mounts to a signpost, and we have one going in each direction to take traffic counts. If you didn't know it was there, you probably wouldn't know it was there, and you wouldn't know what it was doing. So we don't put tubes across the road. We don't have any other signs. It's pretty inconspicuous, and they're even smaller now. A set of these is about nine thousand dollars. And we can then download the data to a laptop and, and, and take all that data and, and see what's going on. So in order to, uh, be considered for a speed hump in a neighborhood, have to have an average daily traffic between three and three thousand vehicles, and the eighty-fifth percentile has to be eleven miles per hour more or more over the posted speed limit. If it doesn't want to meet one of those two criteria by our policy, it shouldn't move forward for consideration. I will tell you.
Just a correction, Danny, you said three to three thousand, so three hundred to.
Three hundred to three thousand, correct. Um, seventy-eight percent of the speed studies that we have conducted since we started this program ha- do not meet all of the criteria. Fifty-seven percent of the speed studies we've conducted do not meet two of the three criteria. So the vast majority we receive aren't, aren't meeting all the criteria. Um, if they do meet the criteria, then the next step is a public meeting is scheduled and held if the property owners decide to proceed. Um, at that point, the property owners will then obtain a petition of all of the residents that are affected, and the policy is pretty clear. So, um, if Glen County's study reveals that eighty, the eighty-fifth percentile traffic speed on the street is eleven miles per hour or more, and it meets the volume, then at least seventy percent of the property owners adjacent to the street where the speed humps are being proposed, and within one hundred yards of any proposed speed hump, must approve of their installation. And that's where the petition comes in. So seventy percent have to, have to approve of that. If it is not eleven miles per na- per hour or more, or they don't meet the, the volume criteria, then the same location, ninety percent of the residents must agree by petition. So that is the process that then, if that's all met, it comes forward to the commission for consideration. Only signatures of legal owners of properties that are adjacent to the streets where the speed humps are being proposed shall be valid and considered in calculating the requisite percentages. So if we have a street that has a lot of rental properties, those aren't going to qualify unless the land, actual landowner, um, signs that petition. And the reason I wanted to talk to you about this is just to, to, speed humps are one of the easily, more easily deployed speed mitigation measures. Um, they're also one that we get the most requests for. They're also one of the most cost-effective for us to install. Um, but our current process and current policy is a little bit arduous if we want to install more of these. Again, if they, if the, if the, uh, sorry, the, all that criteria is met, then it comes to the board for consideration. The next device we want to talk about is the speed feedback sign. So this is a sign that is posted, a digital sign. I'm going to show you a picture of one that we have coming off the causeway onto St. Simon's Island.
Hey, can we just stop there for a second?
Sure.
And just, uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions on the speed, uh, because it comes up a lot. So I just want to see if there, before Danny goes on with the, with the signs, anything related to the speed hump or bump policy that we have that you want to take a look at?
I just, my thing is, uh, I think nine thousand dollars, is it pretty secure to whatever you got it on?
Yeah, we chain it and lock it. Yeah. I, I don't know that you're going to pawn it very easily.
Yeah.
So. Was, was that the same device used on South Harrington?
Yes, that is probably one of the actual devices used on South Harrington.
Thank you.
I think there's, uh, Commissioners, uh, John Gentry, just one, one point that I, I want to make sure we didn't, uh, go through very, uh, too quickly on is the speed hump policy he's talking about is on neighborhood streets, not collector's streets. So there is a difference in the type of street. So for example, we had a lot of discussion on North Harrington. It's really not a neighborhood street anymore. It's a collector's street. So there is where the policy is in conflict really with, with how we, uh, implement some of, uh, these speed management devices.
Yeah. And I agree. If you, if you look at, so Frederica would be considered an arterial, a main roadway. Harrington, a collector that takes you to your subdivision, you know, at one point you didn't have those subdivisions there, so it probably would have been more of a neighborhood street. But it now takes you to a subdivision and to those neighborhood streets. So it, it, the, that street. So, i- i- the, that street, road has changed over time a little bit.
A- and the data didn't come out?
The recent data, recent data does not show that, um, that there is not enough over that eighty-fifth percentile speed. So, it does not show or warrant. Uh, previously it did, but it, it may have, but it does not now.
And that was weighed as a collector.
Well, we looked at it, we looked at it the same way. We, there's, we look, if you do a speed study, it's, it's, it's the same. It's based on the posted speed limit. So.
I have one comment. So, um, I appreciate you taking the lead on, uh, this effort, Mr. Smith. And, um, you know, some of the neighborhood streets in District Four, um, are, um, cut-throughs, and they're not collector's streets. But, the, the eighty-five percent is high, given some of those neighbors. And when I say high, I, last time I looked, that's a higher required percentage than the city has for speed control. I think there's a seventy-five percent. I could be wrong.
Yeah.
I just wondered if that's something that we can look at and.
And, and we, we can, and, and part of discussing the policy with you is, is that it's your, it's your purview as the board to change that policy if you wish so, for us to bring it forward for changes.
Right, because a- as you've pointed out, the challenge is so many times the owner is not living locally, and it's a run of property.
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Uh, a speed feedback sign is another device. And this is a sign that is, um, is dynamic, and I mean that has a digital display, usually posted in conjunction with an existing static, just a regular speed limit sign. And that digital readout has, the sign has a radar unit in it, just like a law enforcement officer with a radar unit, see how fast you're going, and it posts how fast you're going. These, these are, um, they're a great tool. I think they're a great device in the correct place. And, again, talking about cost, the cost of a single feedback sign is forty-six hundred dollars. That's just the initial purchase to put that thing up and includes a solar unit with it to keep it powered, because it does require electrical power to work. So, if you had a pair of those on a single street, you're up, you know, getting pretty expensive there. So, we have one on the causeway that, uh, as you come off the causeway onto Saint Simons, it tells you how fast you're going. And the speed feedback signs are useful at speed reductions. So, areas where drivers are driving one speed and then transition to a lower speed. So, you're on the causeway, forty-five miles an hour. Most people are doing a little bit faster, fifty to fifty-five, and that speed then, when you get to the island, transitions to thirty-five. So, this sign is, is good at those locations. That's where they're recommendate, recommended to be installed, is to say, hey, you've been driving this fast, it's time to slow down, because the speed limit has changed. Um, these can be term, permanent or temporary installations, and depending on the location. We, Glen County Public Works purchased, have, and deploy a speed feedback trailer. So, this is a portable device that we can put at any location and move around. It will also measure traffic data, how many cars and how fast they're going. I don't trust that data because it's telling you, slow down, you're going too fast. So, I don't think we're getting good data out of that, but it does give us some information. This is one that we recently acquired in July, and we've been using it at different locations throughout the county. Right before school started, we went around to all the school zones, put it up, just to get people, hey, this is the speed limit. School's getting ready to start, you need to pay attention to it. But, other than informational and kind of a, hey, pay attention, it doesn't, that's, that's what it does. Purchased that piece of equipment, that single trailer was about nine thousand dollars. There are some other signs. Um, the sign on your right is about eight hundred dollars. That sign is, that is nothing more than a light kit that goes around an existing static speed limit sign that may make you pay more attention to it. You know, one thing, if you drive down a certain street every day, and there are signs on it like a speed limit sign, you're going to drive generally the speed you drive, and you see that sign every day, you're probably not going to pay a whole lot of attention to it. The sign on your left is a, uh, like, another reactive sign. This is a sign, and there's a series of these recently installed on Haber Sham as you head southbound towards Community Road. As many of you know, there is a, a pretty nasty curve there to the left, and there are frequent accidents where people go too fast, miss that curve, and end up, um, driving straight through that intersection or, uh, crashing their vehicle. So, we've installed these interactive signs. They just went up last week. As you drive towards that sign, those lights light up in a, in series and alert you that you need to slow down. There is a dangerous curve ahead. My, uh, clicker's not working, guys.
And Catherine scrolled for you?
Yes, please, if you want to proceed to the next one. There we go. That's just another picture of that, that sign on Haber Sham. And again, those, those arrows go around that, that curve and light up in series to let you know that, um, having a problem. So, the, the next slide is, oh, we're back.
And those are twenty-eight hundred?
Twenty-eight hundred dollars apiece.
And you put five of them, four of them there?
Yep. And, you know, if one gets taken out, I don't get a replacement for free.
Hope, hope we have some sandwich parts out of it.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, another option is pavement markings. So, speed limit pavement markings. This is where you put a marking on the pavement that, um, tells you what the speed limit is. These are effective. They're not, statistically, the effects aren't great, but people do see that. You know, if you're focused on the road ahead, you're going to see that. It's probably going to slow you down. You can also paint slow or school, and you'll obviously see the school on the road, and it gets your attention. It's just something other than a sign that gets your attention. Um, these are really, they're, uh, the, the studies say that you get a minimal results from them. You know, it doesn't slow people down that much, but, um, they are very cost-effective and expensive to, to utilize and put on the pavement.
How often would you have to repaint that?
Uh, probably every couple of years. If you're using paint, if you use thermoplastic, it's going to, you're going to get a little longer life out of it, but it's a little more expensive upfront. And we can, we can paint in-house very easily. So, um, well, once you put the stencil down and mark it, then it's just freshening up the paint every so often. And this is, um, this is a, uh, a three-D kind of image, and believe it or not, that is a pavement marking. They call that pavement patty. And, um, it's, it's, it's pretty abrupt. In fact, uh, they were used for a little while, and they quit using them because people were having, um, some PTSD as a result of driving over pavement.
I could see that.
Not recommending it, just showing it as one of the options that, that have been used. So, all right. That's the end of that presentation, so I'm happy to take any further questions.
Danny, I really like the, you know, the lights, you know. I, I, I just think it's effective. It gets a speeder's attention. It just caused, you know.
Yeah.
Often causes a pump the brakes. How, how many more can we get in in, uh, District Four?
Yeah.
Now you're in.
So, I like the lights too. I think they're great. I, in a residential setting, I don't know that it's our best option. But, my problem with it is that forty-six hundred dollars apiece, if we're going to go that way, we need a policy.
Well, even that eight hundred dollar light, you had the light that was.
Yeah, the, the light kid. So, that's, you know, um, I just, I think we need to be cautious. We need to have a policy on where we, because that can, um, that can really break a budget very quickly. And it's kind of where do you stop, you know?
Do those, do those light in sequence, or is it flash, or does it just?
You can, you can get them where they go in sequence. You can get them, they flash, and you can get them, they're static, that they just come on and stay on for a little while. You know, I, I'm envisioning my, some of these, I have concerns of, uh, you know, they're going to look great in a teenager's room, you know? We were all teenagers once, and, and that's what I worry about. And it, you know, if you, the, the lights like we have, the one coming on to Saint Simon at forty-six hundred dollars each, you need one in each direction, really.
We won't leave it through here. We need to call a recess. All right. Uh, Danny, thank you, uh, for that. I know you're up for the next one, but it appears that we're going to need to call a short recess.
Can we still, can I still answer a question, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I, I just think we need a, a policy and need to think about where we use some of those, um, so that we're not, uh, you know, spending a, a significant amount of money annually on those.
Danny, if you could, maybe come up with some recommendations. Get with, uh, Scott's on, uh, on team, so maybe get with, uh, get with him. And just think about, uh, some recommendations on what the criteria should be for those signs. You know, the other thing that you mentioned too was the, uh, the maintenance costs and replacement costs and, right?
Right. Once it's up, I don't get a break on, if I have to replace it, it's, it's forty-six hundred dollars. All right. Any other questions?
All right. We're just, uh, standing in short recess, or sit in short recess.
I've been sitting a while. I'm going to stand if that's okay.
All right, we're back live now, and, uh, we'll go to item five on our agenda. It's to receive a presentation regarding, uh, the work order process and prioritization. And, uh, again, we have, uh, Mr. Danny Smith with us, so take it.
Good afternoon again, commissioners. Danny Smith, Public Works Director. We wanted to take a minute and talk to you a little bit about our work order, uh, process, our work management and workflows. Um, as you know, we have had quite a bit of rain, and we are receiving and have received a lot of calls for service. I know that some of you have received calls and said, we called Public Works, why aren't, why aren't they here? So, we just wanted to tell you about how we work this process. Before I do that, um, I don't know if you know this, but it's interesting, worth noting. Um, for this year, we are currently on track to have the second wettest year since eighteen ninety-five for the Brunswick area. So, that's over a hundred years of rainfall, the second wettest year. We're on track to have the wettest year since nineteen forty, which is when weather data was, was being, started being collected on Saint Simons. So, the, the wettest year, and we're currently approximately twenty inches over normal rainfall. So, um, that, all that extra rain that we think we've been seeing it, we have been seeing it. We currently use a program called Cartograph to track and monitor all work requests and work orders. Cartograph displays work orders spatially and as a list. By spatial, I mean, um, when we bring up Cartograph and, and bring up where we have work to do, work orders, we see it dots on a map, and that shows us what we have. This is, uh, this screenshot is from about two weeks ago, but not much has changed. We're currently just for, just for roadside ditches and culverts, sitting on approximately a hundred and twenty work orders as of this morning. So, that means we have a hundred and twenty locations that are waiting for us to get there as of this morning. Uh, that's a list. That shows kind of a list of what a supervisor sees when they bring up Cartograph to see what work they have assigned to them. So, the way that we receive information, requests for service, See Click Fix, which is another new program that is implemented along with Cartograph. See Click Fix is a way for a citizen, a resident, or anybody to use their, a mobile app to put in a information and a request for work, phone calls to customer service, phone calls to Public Works, and then always commissioner text, so, that we receive. So, once we receive this information, it is assigned to a superintendent or supervisor in Public Works. And depending on the request, if it's signs, it's going to go to one supervisor or superintendent. If it's drainage, it goes to another. Um, and they are assigned to investigate that. Their investigation, they look at the severity, the need, they, we, and we triage. Is this something that needs par- uh, attention immediately? Is it something we can get to this week, or is it something that's rather routine? And we can put it on the list and accomplish it in the order it was received. And most of them are accomplishing the order they're received. From that point, a work order is prepared, then the resident is contacted. And I say that, that's something we're working hard on and something that, that we are, um, reminding our supervisors daily. You need to contact the resident. It's not necessarily to say, we're going to correct this problem today. It is to say, we've heard you, we have the prob, we have identified the problem, we have a work order, and it's going to be approximately this much time to get there. That's not something that we have been a hundred percent, um, compliant with. It's not something that we have been a one-hundred percent successful in having everybody do. That is something we are moving towards and something that we are working on daily to make sure that we are communicating back with callers to let them know, we, we, we've got you, we've got the problem, we have a work order. Uh, from there, it's assigned to a crew for resolution. Non-emergency or work orders that, and it should say, do not need immediate response, are completed in the order they receive. So, if you call today, you go here on the list. Somebody that calls tomorrow goes here on the list. Somebody that called two weeks ago should be a little bit higher on the list and closer to resolution. Or proximity to other work orders to maximize efficiency, maximize efficiency of crews. We're kind of in a backlog right now. Once we get through that backlog, and this is where that, that map and that spatial comes into play. Work supervisor says, we're going to go work here, and I notice I've got right around the corner another work request for the same type of work. We'll go ahead and knock that, both those out while we're there, because it's more efficient to do it that way and makes more sense. That's how we want to be operating. Um, we're also working towards routine tasks becoming routine. So, outfall canal mowing, working towards a route and a, working that route rather than jumping from here to there to there. We want it to be on a route and a schedule, um, something that is constant and repetitive two to three times annually. So, so we're not jumping around, again, trying to maximize efficiency. I, I think it's worth noting, I, earlier today, I noted a, um, a comment on the Next Door app. A resident who said, I called in and Public Works still hasn't come and taken care of this problem. Okay, they have their address in the Next Door app, so I was able to look up on Cartograph when they called in. One call was received Friday of last week. One call from another neighbor was received on Monday. So, no, we haven't gotten there in four days. I wish that we could get there in that short a period of time. I wish that we could respond immediately, but that's just, we just are unable to, unless it's an emergency, get there that fast. We'll keep working. Maybe we'll get there. So, we are looking at, at steps to reduce the labor demand and increase efficiency. And I've got a couple examples of these, and this will allow us to get to these problems like the one reported on Next Door this morning faster, because we're hoping to take and reduce, and it, well, we're hoping to maximize the resources we have available and put them on these other tasks. So, a street sweeping contract. We're, um, we're, Thursday night, we'll be coming to you with a, uh, to approve a street sweeping contract. Nineteen Glen County and G dot streets, two hundred and four lane miles monthly. We're going to res- reduce the sweeping staff to one full-time equivalent, one employee. Currently have two. So, that's going to give us another employee that instead of driving a street sweeper, is going to go do things like clear culverts and clean ditches. You know, sweeping not only improves aesthetics, but it is also the first step in drainage maintenance, and contracting it out is more efficient than us doing it in-house.
That's something you do at two or three or four in the morning.
That is correct. Most of our, all of our sweeping, whether it's completed by Glen County staff or contractor, is done at night, overnight. You know, those early morning hours. Uh, that's the safest and most effective time to do it, and we're not impacting traffic. So, right-away mowing contract. Um, Public Works is currently using, utilizing nine thousand man-hours. And I'll say man-hours, people-hours annually. So, nine thousand hours of staff time annually for right-away mowing. Um, we're going to put out a contract, I would say a minimum of ten, it might be twelve, streets will be contracted for eighteen mowing cycles annually. This is going to reduce mowing staff by a minimum of four-time, four full-time equivalents to assign and respond to work orders for the cost of what two people, it, it would cost us two people. So, we're going to, we're going to gain efficiency, we're going to gain staff by contracting out that mowing and reassign. and reassign that staff to doing other work, like the drainage work that we so desperately need.
Is that, that seasonal, Greg?
It is seasonal, you know, when it comes to right-away, we still have to pick up trash, we still have to pick up debris. You know, we still have some mowing and, and, and keep things under control. So it's heavy during the summer months, but, um, there still is a winter component to it. Herbicide use for vegetation, vegetation in and on drainage assets. So a significant number of calls that we receive for ditch cleaning are actually requests to mow. There are vegetation that has overgrown in the ditch. Um, we have implemented and started using herbicide. We're gonna continue to use herbicide and not just round up. We're not just gonna kill it. We're looking at herbicide that will, um, kill the, some of the broad leaves and leave the grasses. We do want some vegetation in places to keep, to prevent erosion. And we're also looking at some, um, some, uh, plant growth regulators that allow that vegetation to be there, but keep it from maturing and growing up tall. And, um, I've used that effectively in other locations and I really like it. So, and then thorough work activities. One of the things that we have changed is, and specifically when it, when we get a call about ditch problems. So if, if you have a row of five houses on any street and house in the middle calls and says, "I need the ditch cleaned." We're not just going out and cleaning the ditch in front of that house. We're going out and either cleaning the, the entire street, or we're cleaning at a minimum all the way to where that ditch intersects with some other drainage asset. So we're trying to do a more thorough job. That's gonna take a little time upfront. It's gonna take a little time, but in the long run, it's going to pay off because eventually we'll either get to it all, or we've done a more thorough job and that water is moving. So, um, it does, again, right now, it's going to extend our times a little bit, but it will pay off in future years. Just a, a quick video of great all and how it works. So that's in, that was in Silver Bluff, and as you can see, those ditches had not been cleaned in awhile or at all, ever. Um, I'm happy to say that in Silver Bluff during Tropical Storm Debbie, we didn't get a single call. We didn't have a single problem. We cleaned every ditch in that neighborhood and not an issue won.
Is that a contracted service or is that something we do in-house?
That's something we do in-house.
We need more of those.
Well, and I, I wish it was that simple, but every one of those, I need two dump trucks and, and at least four people.
Is that something you would consider, uh, I mean, I know we have our own in-house, but we would consider contracting some of that service out?
It, it-
For the ditches go-
It could be, but there's not many private, most private contractors are gonna have that piece of equipment right there. They don't have that great all, and, you know, that piece of equipment on the side of a road is, is not the best option. But it's something we can look at. This is one of our outfall ditches and, you know, what it looks like after it's done. Um, a lot of what we do, again, with these is mowing. That's, that's the bulk of what we do. That's the bulk of the calls, is, is taking care of the vegetation that becomes overgrown. And grass does not stop water from flowing. You know, it may, it may slow it down a little bit, but it's not gonna stop it. You know, this is another, another area, difficult access area that was overgrown, needed some cleaning. You know, we do leave some material on the bank. Sometimes it, we have to rebuild those banks. Sometimes we need to, to restore them back, any erosion that's occurred, and, um, get a little bit of that material on top so that, so that we actually have something there to work with and to work on.
That's a before and after picture.
That is a before and after picture. That's the end of my presentation. Any questions on that?
Alright.
I'd like to hear, herbicide thing.
Yeah, thank you.
So Commissioners, I think that, uh, just goes to Danny's presentation, just some of the things that, uh, he's been working on. We're trying to work on, on other departments as well, just trying to meet some of your goals on customer service and efficiencies. Uh, but this is certainly one where we've seen some, some pretty significant impact. Trying to be proactive versus reactive, particularly when it comes to, uh, drainage and, and flooding. I think that, uh, would you say Silver Bluff example was, uh, was a, was a perfect example of, of what we're trying to get to so we don't have problems that we then have to go out and, you know, try and rectify, uh, afterwards. We're trying to get to it and prevent those as much as possible, uh, before they happen.
How many miles would you say we have in this district? I'll use my district, it's the largest district.
Yeah.
In District One.
So I, I think from a, you know, if we look at our outfall ditches, which are our larger ones, probably, you know, that we maintain, probably close to a hundred miles.
And that's out, that's the big ditches.
That's the bigger ditches.
That's not even the ditches in subdivisions and rightways.
No, so, you know, I, probably two-hundred-and-fifty miles of roadside ditches swales, easily that many. You know, if you have a road that, if you have a road that doesn't have curb and gutter, you have a mile, you've got two miles of ditches generally, and one on each side.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Hey, but we are lucky to the fact we don't have dirt roads.
We are very lucky that we don't have a lot of dirt roads.
Alright, we do have need for executive session today for the matters of-
Potential litigation.
Potential litigation. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rafoski, a second by Commissioner Sweat, go into executive session. We stand reassessed.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Raffoski, a second by Commissioner Swett, coming out of executive session, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Raffoski, a second by Commissioner Swett, to adjourn, all in favor, please raise your right hand.